The Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs, and Procurement calls this public hearing to order. It is now 10:00 a.m. on Thursday, October 29, 2015. Present with me today is Senator Anthony Adda. Thank you, Senator, for joining us. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on Bill Number 147-33COR introduced by myself. And Bill 147 amends Sections 5101, 5104, 5107, 5109, 5112, and 5114 and adds a new Section 5118, all of Chapter 5, Title 16, relative to the authorities and responsibilities of the Department of Revenue and Taxation and the Department of Public Works to enforce weight limits and safe operations of commercial vehicles on Guam's highways, establishing penalties for violations, and establishing permit requirements, and establishing a truck enforcement screening station facility fund. Notice of this public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media on October 22, 2015, meeting the five-day notice requirement, and a 48-hour notice was provided on October 26, 2015, to senators, stakeholders, and the local media, and was also published in the Guam Daily Post and Pacific Daily News, thus meeting the requirements of the open government law. This public hearing is also being broadcast on local television. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 5:00 p.m. on Friday, November 6, 2015. So please address testimonies to Senator Thomas Adda, chairperson, Committee on Transportation. We'll go ahead now and start the public hearing, and I also want to acknowledge the presence of Senator Nerissa Underwood. Thank you, Senator, for joining us. So I've pretty much read what Bill 147 is about. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and call forward Mr. Glenn Leon Guerrero from the Department of Public Works, and you can have Jeff, sure, join you at the table. We have also received written testimony from the Department of Revenue and Taxation, and we will enter that into the record. Could I see a copy of that testimony? Oh, I'm sorry. The testimony on Bill 147 from the Department of Revenue and Taxation, signed by the Director, John P. Camacho, basically reads, "As the lead agency for the motor carrier safety assistance program tasked with a responsibility to promote commercial motor vehicle safety, we affirm our support of Bill 147-33. We also acknowledge your commitment and dedication to the creation of this long-awaited legislation to properly regulate overweight commercial motor vehicles that cause undue wear and tear on our island's highways and roadways. Upon reviewing the bill, I noted what I perceive to be positive changes in the regulation of oversized and overweight commercial motor vehicles. I believe the proposed changes foster commercial motor vehicle safety and safeguards against roadway damage, which ultimately benefits all drivers traversing our island's roadways. The most significant change noted are those that will complement our motor carrier safety assistance program, safety goals which are as follows: empowering the Department of Public Works with the authority to have direct oversight of the truck enforcement screening station, and possess citation authority to regulate overweight and oversized vehicles, critical components that are needed to deter the operation of overweight commercial motor vehicles. Secondly, revamping Section 5107, which provides clarity on the permissible gross weight, axle, wheel loads, establishing overall gross weight limits, and the application of the bridge formula. These are vital components necessary to determine compliance of established weight limits. We thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on the bill and for your continued support in promoting highway safety." Signed, John P. Camacho, Director. So that was the written testimony that was submitted by the Department of Revenue and Tax. So with that, Mr. Director, go ahead and introduce yourself for the record, and also the individual with you.
Thank you, Chairman, Adda, Senator Anthony Adda, Senator Nerissa Underwood. My name is Glenn Leon Guerrero. I'm the Director for Department of Public Works. To my right is Jeff Wilson, and he's with our -- he's with Parsons Brinkerhoff, part of our program management team. And he will provide technical support for whatever technical questions we have. I'm going, if you don't mind, would like to read my letter.
Please proceed.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of Bill 147-33, or the Truck Enforcement Screening Station, or better known as TESS. Guam's routed roads, village roads, and bridges are a vital resource to the island, transporting people and goods, and serving as the backbone of Guam's economy. These resources are often taken for granted, assumed that'll last forever and won't require significant funding, sources to maintain their integrity. Nothing could be further from the truth, as millions of dollars are spent each year to upgrade only a fraction of our roadway and bridge infrastructure. It is because of this significance -- because of this challenge to maintain our transportation system that we must take steps to ensure that those limited federal and local transportation dollars last as long as possible. Truck weights and the loads that they transmit to the roadways and bridges is the most significant factor affecting their lifespan. Research has shown that the increase in axle weight generally causes an exponential increase in pavement damage. That is, a small increase in axle load causes much more than a small amount more deterioration or damage. For instance, with the flexible pavements like asphalt, the relationship between an axle load and the pavement deterioration has an exponential power of three to four. In numerical terms, a 5% increase in weight will cause between 16% to 22% more deterioration than normal. For rigid pavements like concrete, this relationship is significantly larger. We currently design and construct our roads to the federally accepted standard of 20 years, projecting traffic growth over the 20-year period using current day percentages of truck versus cars. When the overweight vehicles use these roads, those roads, they shorten the lifespan and cause repairs and reconstruction to occur much sooner. When they use them, often more significant damage, and repairs are often needed right away. It is with this in mind that in 2010, the Department of Public Works, in cooperation with the Federal Highway Administration, undertook to design and construct a Way-in-Motion WIM system, or anostatic scale facility and scale house, to monitor the weight of heavy trucks, to ensure that they remain in conformance with Guam law. The facility, known as the Truck Enforcement Screening Station, is located on Route 11, near the Port Authority of Guam, and was completed in 2013. Since that time, the Department of Public Works has been working with the legislature and the Guam Attorney General's Office on updating Chapter 5 of 16 GCA to address the test facility, as well as update the law to bring the size, weight, and load limitations and restrictions of oversized and overweight permits into alignment with the majority of the states in the U.S. The test facility and draft legislation are considered to be an integral part of our overall road and infrastructure improvements related to the Guam buildup. The changes will allow not only the monitoring of weight and the size at test, but will give the DPW the authority to monitor vehicles throughout Guam. The law also includes provisions for a fair and safe assessment for oversized or overweight vehicles, and allows for specialized hauling vehicles to safely transport heavier-than-normal loads by means of a permit process. The provisions aim not to differentiate between types of roadway users; it aims to equitably regulate the weights and sizes of vehicles on Guam's public roadways for all users. Finally, at this time, at the time of my appointment to the Department of Public Works, had issued a few -- there have been -- we have issued a few overweight, oversized and overweight permits to Guam Solid Waste Authority and others. While I'm allowing a transition time in order to allow the Guam Solid Waste Authority and similarly situated companies, in which to update fleet equipment, the oversized and overweight permits will be revoked effective January 1, 2016. In this respect, so long as I am Director, my policy that no oversized or overweight will be issued for loads that can be easily split up and carried at safer and non-damaging weights. I wrote this back in 2010, I mean, sorry, earlier this month, and I have to correct that, because there is a situation, and I'll explain that later. The work in preparing the update to this law was made abundantly clear that overweight vehicles are severely damaging Guam's roadway and roadways. We urgently need a uniform and fair application of acceptable national standard for truck weights and sizes, and the ability to reasonably enforce the law and protect our precious resources. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify. I'm free to answer any questions for you that you may have.
Okay. I also want to recognize the presence of Senator Rory Respecho. Thank you, Senator. Senator Mary Torres. I just have a couple of questions, first of all. Well, a couple of comments. First of all, I know that the committee and DPW and Rev and Tax has been working on this particular bill since, I believe, the 32nd legislature, almost going on two years now. And there has been numerous discussions between the two government agencies and with the Chamber of Commerce with their transportation committee. And so they've sat in in a number of the roundtable discussions that we've had and received their input. I just, I'm hoping to get at least written testimony from them. I'm surprised that they're not here today. And then we've also had a meeting with the Department of Defense folks with concerns that they have about these specific cargoes that they handle. And I know that they had suggested certain -- they had asked for certain amendments to the bill, and that was supposed to be drafted by, I think, by your legal counsel, and that should be forthcoming, yes. And so we'll make that amendment to the bill before we report it out. And basically, what that amendment, what the concern of the Department of Defense was, was that they certainly embraced the bill and would like to see, you know, the enforcement of weight limits on the roads, because it's also in their interest, in that many of these roads are partially funded by the Department of Defense. But their concern, of course, was that, you know, you don't want to be pulling over a truck that's carrying munitions, and then it exposes it to security concerns. But rather, they're basically saying, if anybody thinks that the truck is overweight, then, you know, catch them either before they leave the munitions storage, or when they arrive at their destination, wherever it is at, on one of the other military bases. So we'll be including that language in the bill to make for that. I do have one question, and that is, now, weight limits have been established, and basically, vehicles are, I mean, we don't want anything on the road that is over 80,000 pounds, correct? So maybe if you can kind of elaborate on that, you know, that's the limit, but then it's really not absolute, because there are circumstances when we may need to exceed that. And so maybe if you can elaborate on that a little bit, as to where that leeway is.
Yeah, thank you. I can elaborate.
It's 80,000 pounds.
It's 80,000, it's 80, well, the current law is 76.8, and we're proposing to take it to 80,000 pounds. And 80,000 pounds is really that main threshold that is used in the design of bridge structures and other infrastructure in the United States. What is important is how that load is distributed. So 80 is just a threshold for a permit; it's not necessarily a threshold for the overall limit. So what the law and the bridge formula can do is allow the addition of additional axles to help distribute a greater-than-80,000-pound load over more axles to reduce the amount of impact that it has on the infrastructure. And so the 80 is really just the limit that turns it over into a permit situation. And really, what we want to do is make sure that the load is adequately distributed over the right number of axles, and that could be five, or six, or seven, or eight. It really depends on the load itself and how it's being moved. We just want to make sure that that's safely done in the number of axles. So the formula will calculate that and checks to make sure that everything is baseline and in compliance with that limit.
Now, does DPW's permit section, I mean, have they received the training to be able to know how to use this formula? I mean, it is not a, you know, it is not a, I don't think the formula is as complicated, but I wouldn't attempt it.
Not yet, Senator. But we actually, as I said, we've had a couple of companies that have come and approached us and asked for waivers, and so we already have the application. Right now, we're going through our embryonic stages. There is a process that we know we want to administer, and once this comes into place, we'll be able to effectuate that.
Now, the bill proposes to impose pretty heavy stiff fines for, let's say, especially, for example, cargo coming out of the port. And if they go through the weigh station, and they are found to be overweight, I mean, the ideal solution would be to say, you know, take it back and come back with a lighter truck. But maybe you can explain, basically, the thinking behind, how do we enforce the weight limitations?
So we talked about this at length, but mainly it was to, because we understand there's going to be a changeover period until a lot of the vehicles get in place, the enforcement part of it will be handled at the test. So the Way-in-Motion, what it does is it registers a weight of a vehicle as it drives over, and it does it while it's moving. There's a tolerance to it. It isn't as accurate as the static scales that are actually at the building itself. So generally, what it does is when a vehicle comes over and it's close, it signals to the vehicle driver that you need to pull over into the static scales, in which case then the truck would come over and sit on the scales, and then we can accurately read how the weight goes to each individual axle. At that point, we can determine whether it's overweight or not, or whether or not a fine would be issued for that. So theoretically speaking, for most people that are running well within the limits of the 80,000 pounds or within the axles, they get the green light, and they move on through the WIM, and they don't need to stop. And so at the facility itself, would only be just a small percentage of the vehicles that would be there, that would have to sit at the scale, be weighed, and then if they're okay, then they move on. If not, then that's when the fine or the fines would be assessed at that point.
And I think it's important to also clarify that this static weigh station that we're talking about is the one right outside of the commercial port.
That's correct, yeah.
And basically, to capture the truckloads that's coming out from the port. And it was discussed that, you know, if an overweight load comes through the weigh station, it cannot go back into the port. And there's really not enough space available to divan to make that weight lighter. And so it's kind of one of those, you know, you take that, the trucking company takes that chance of having to pay a stiff fine. And the fine, the stiff fine continues to increase for every infraction, and eventually to the point where then possibly a consideration for taking away the business license. And I don't know if there was anything to the AG's part, but basically, it was really more of an economic disincentive that's being proposed by the bill, largely because of other limitations. You cannot return the truck back to the port, and you don't have, we don't have the space to be able to divan it. So it's kind of like, you know, slap on the hand the first time, a good slap on the pocketbook the second time, the third time will certainly be a lot more serious. Do any of the members have any questions?
I'm going to try to sound as coherent as possible with the limited vocabulary that I have relative to engineering and transportation. But I'm really just curious, have you kept data regarding the number of times or the frequency by which these trucks have gone over the weight?
I believe the answer is yes. I think in the beginning, when it was first turned on and made effective, that they did just some random testing, at least to see how things went. The static scales themselves have to be certified regularly, and so, because so much rides on that, that's much different than the WIM. But I know they did, and I know within, at least the committee and what we discussed, was that when the time comes to actually turn the facility on and begin regular operations, that we would entertain a short period of time that we would just record data and give feedback to those that are coming through, and let them know if, for instance, that they're running heavy, and give kind of a trial period, or at least a grace period at that first point, just to help ease the transition into it before we finally throw the switch and say, okay, from now on, now we're going to start to institute the fines.
And were you finding, during that test period, were you finding?
Senator, I don't remember the exact amount of the data, but I suppose we could.
There were some vehicles that were overweight, yes.
There were.
Yeah.
We do know that the trash trucks have been operating way over the 80,000 pounds, I think even as high as 100,000 pounds.
That's correct.
Some even more than 100, yeah.
Yeah.
And they've been issued a waiver up to 90,000 pounds. That has since been rescinded, and we are now working with them. As I mentioned earlier, they have a contractual, sorry, they have a contractual obligation, and so we are working with them, and we're saying, okay, what's the, how much time would it take for you to purchase more assets so that you get within the limits that we're looking at? And that's what the first-of-the-year deadline is.
Are they, to then rectify the situation, are they looking at using smaller trailers?
They can. Again, it's clearly up to them. But it's, the issue for us is weight, and.
Just as a follow-up to the waiver, so then, wouldn't that be, I know we want to give the grace period, right? And they, I'm hearing you to say that there are waivers, they can apply for waivers. So those are temporary waivers, are they?
That's correct.
Yeah. And then you would give them a period of time, and that would be limited?
That's right.
Limited to a certain period of time, and then after that, you start imposing the fines?
I don't, I'm not generous in my waiver, Senator. The only other waiver that I'm offering is to a petroleum company that's saying that they got to supply diesel to our power plants. So I understand it's a critical situation, and again, giving them the same consideration so that they can purchase more vehicles and then.
I see.
And bring it to Guam, and then, because if you're telling me, if they were telling me that it's going to cost more, I'm going to tell them that our roads' infrastructure is too fragile for us to, so I would not grant a waiver if you're telling me it's going to cost more. I would ask them to do more runs.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Bruce.
Are these weight limitations that are being imposed on the petroleum trucks the same weight limitations that would be imposed on petroleum trucks back in the mainland?
That's correct, right.
So there's really no reason why they should be exempted?
Yes, sir.
Okay, fine. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is along the lines of Senator Underwood was asking, basically, we have an idea of how many noncompliant vehicles there are currently, just to.
Yeah. I can venture a guess on what the percentage would be, but if, it just, my gut tells me that it's in the single digits. It's probably not, I mean, most of, at least for those that are coming out of the port that we know, you know, there are tear weights on the cargo containers, the trucks themselves are pretty fixed in what they have, and so, you know, those are generally, there could be some containers that are a bit overloaded, and one might wonder about how the, what's on the bill lading and the tear weight for it, and how that relates to it. We do suspect, however, that on some of the other roads, construction vehicles, other types of vehicles, could be much more variable, and could be higher than what we would probably expect to see at the tests.
Okay. And I just kind of caught what the Director said, where he started to read, under your watch, it would be your policy not to issue any oversized or overweight vehicles, and you said that you were going to revise that statement.
No, Senator, did I say that, no, Senator, did I say that I'm eating my words, sir?
No, but I wanted to kind of have a discussion based on how you would amend that section. I know you talked about the waiver for the petroleum companies, right?
Right. And that's what I said, I needed to catch myself, because I wrote this back in September. Didn't change it, I apologize. But we recently had a discussion with a petroleum company.
Because the bill would give you the authority to provide those permits on a case-by-case basis, or?
That's right.
So how would you revise that statement? That you would be judicious in your?
I would, it would be hard, I would be hard-pressed to issue out permits. It would have to be extremely extenuating circumstances that will allow it, and, I mean, we've been in discussions, as we said with Senator Adda in our roundtable discussions, that GPA has, some of their contractors are looking to bring in generators that are obviously overweight, we're going to have to follow the axle policy, we're looking at that, and we're trying to work with them as well. We're part of this community, so we want generators, if they're going to come and traverse over the roads, but we also don't want to destroy the roads.
So for some of the newer vehicles, if there's more axles, then they can go above the 80,000? You've mentioned if it's evenly distributed and?
Correct. Or, say, for example, so we were discussing the trash trucks. The trash trucks, as you know, have a third, they have a three axle in the back. Actually, by the bridge formula, that truck can legally haul at 86,000, based on just the addition of that third axle that's there. It can make that much difference in how the calculation goes. With respect to the petroleum waiver, I advise the Director, technically, I look at it under the same bridge formula, and so in this particular case, we knew it was for a fixed period of time, it was about a quarter of a year, and what I did was try and assess, what does that equate to over an annual basis? Is it within reason, if I accumulate a few more loads on the pavement, what would that relate to in the span of a year? And would that be reasonable, given the necessity of the situation, that we're in a power crisis, and we need to, you know, be considerate of that, as I make a technical recommendation? So I fall right back on the bridge formula, and I'll look at it that way. The roads are designed by ESALs, and ESALs are just axle loads that, they need a baseline, because there's big trucks, and cars, and vans, and there's all different sizes of vehicles on the road, so we design it to an ESAL. And a road is like a glass, and that's my analogy, that when we're filling up the glass with ESALs, and when the glass is full, it's served its life, and it's going to need to be replaced. So if we run overweight, we're putting a little bit more in, a little bit sooner, as long as what I'm being asked, at least from the DPW side, if it's within reason, given the need, we can make those decisions, but we understand that we're, every little bit just shortens that life of the pavement just a little bit more. And just trying to keep that reasonable, and if it's too much. And just trying to keep that reasonable and if it's too much, then we have to say--
And also the safety of the other motorists, because wasn't there an incident many years ago where there was a truck that was coming off of making a left turn and then--
It was a metal, metal scrap hauling truck, yes.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
And I'd like to get back to that, that waiver, I'm really concerned about that, especially when you were mentioning about the petroleum companies.
Yeah, do you, the only wa, the waiver, they, they, they wanted to go as high as, I think was 97,000 gallons--
Yeah, almost 98,000 is what they had.
And we're staying within the bridge formula, so it stays no higher than 86,000?
Well, it, it will be above the bridge formula based on, it'll, it'll be an overweight situation, but--
Yeah, I'm, I'm concerned about that because I'm, I'm not, not just about the roads, but about the safety to the public. Should that vehicle overturn and create a, a diesel spill or, I mean, you've got that much more diesel or whatever it's carrying petroleum in that vehicle, you know? I mean, I, I, I don't think any waiver should be granted. I mean, if you, if you're going to turn around and say 76,000 pounds is the, is the, is the--
Eighty thousand.
The limit, or whatever, 80,000, we can go 76, 80, whichever, then they should distribute that weight off to the different vehicles. If you're saying it's for the power plant, I can understand, but they're in a contract with the, with GPA. So they should, one way or the other, get that field to GPA and not depend on overloading one truck just so that they can make it convenient for themselves.
I, I think the way I would probably tend to look at it, Senator, is that it's not necessarily overloading that vehicle. That vehicle had the capacity to carry more. It's certainly, we would never, at least from my perspective as--
You just got there telling--
As a professional engineer, I would never recommend that we would allow an unsafe vehicle to traverse.
But you just got through saying that every day it wears on the road little by little. So just, just by allowing a waiver for those petroleum trucks to travel heavily on the roads every day takes away from the road, doesn't it?
A little bit of wear and tear, yeah.
So, and that's what I'm saying. I, I don't see a, a portion in my power bill that says, well, because they use one truck, we're going to take off 12 cents off your power bill. So I don't think it's not, it's not fair and it's not right that you turn around and grant a waiver to the petroleum company so that it'll be easier for them to transport fuel, which is they were contracted to transport anyway from point A to point B. If it takes them three trucks to deliver 100,000 gallons of diesel fuel, then so be it, it takes three trucks. Don't make it convenient for it to be delivered in one truck at the cost and the expense of the people.
And, and, and I fully agree with that, with, with that philosophy, Senator, but today we, we are in a power crisis.
Director. We're in a power crisis, but it's not the fuel that's the power crisis. It's because Cavaris 3 and 4 are down.
That's correct.
It's not the fuel.
No, they're using other power--
I understand, but it's not the fuel. Did you hear GPA say, well, because we couldn't get fuel from Cavaris to, to Dedido, that's why Cavaris, or the Dedido Power Plant went out? It's not. It's just like the trucks that are carrying the trash that are overloaded. I don't see a reduction in tipping fees to the people. So until they reduce the tipping fees to the people of Guam, then they should turn around and distribute that weight off those trash trucks going to the dump. So here we are, we're turning around and making it convenient for the transporters, but we're not making it convenient for the people?
Senator, that's not, that's not the intent. What my, the, the thinking is that we don't want the GPA power plants to run out of fuel and so--
Director, I just said, I've not heard one time from CCU, from GPA, that there's a fuel crisis, that we're short on fuel getting it up to the power plants. So I, I don't understand a waiver and I hope that from this day forward, that a waiver will not be granted. And if they need to carry it on three different trucks to service that generator up at Dedido, then that's the contractor's responsibility. That is their responsibility to transport that fuel, however they get it up there. So if Joe Public went to Hawaiian Rock and got a truckload of gravel and you guys just happened to pull him over, he would have to take off whatever excess, right? Or are you going to tell him to go back and, you know, distribute your load?
No, we would find him.
You would find him? So then why are we granting a waiver?
I mean, I, I, I just made a recommendation, Director, and let him do it, but I didn't look at it that way. If there are more trucks, there are more ESALs, there are more repetitive impacts on the load, there's a balance between adding more trucks and the amount--
But we got to saying--
--that additional weight adds up in ESALs, so it's kind of--
The heavier the weight, the more wear on the roads. And that's what the testimony you guys just provided to me and that's why I'm going off of this waiver. Because I just don't understand it, why we would grant a waiver to a vehicle that's overweight for a certain period of time, be it six months or whatever it may be. And then you're saying now, now you're saying, well, well, now it's, it's easier if we just have it, one loaded truck instead of three different trucks.
Noted, Senator.
So that's why I'm saying, and I would request the chairman to find out whether you'd be granting any waivers from this day forward for petroleum companies, for the, the trash haulers, whoever it may be. Because I think if the public is going to be held to a certain standard, then everyone should be held to that standard. And not this waiver, waiver, waiver. Because you know, just not too long ago, we had a bill before this, this body that talked about a waiver and the, the, the agency says, well, I'm not granting any more waivers. So be it. That's, if that's the route we're going to take, then let's take it. But let's not give waivers to selected individuals or selected companies and everybody else has to follow the policy. Because if that's the case, then let's just grant a waiver to everyone.
We won't do that, Senator. Your, your, your observations and your, your demands are, are well noted, sir.
I'm just, I'm just going by what you guys are testifying to. I didn't, I just read through the bill and I'm just going by what you testified. And I just find it appalling that you're granting waivers for certain periods and then we're talking about, you know, fines and penalties and, but yet we're granting waivers. So if that's the case, let's grant a waiver for everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
I had a question. Hafaday.
Hafaday.
I can appreciate the, the delicate balance here and how you're, you're trying to work things out so that it has less impact on the highways. You know, unfortunately, we, we have to deal with what we've got, right? We, we have a small imprint, we have a fixed roadway system and not many alternate routes. I know in, in some jurisdictions, there are areas where if it's a common thoroughfare, certain loads of trucks aren't allowed to traverse that. And I also noticed in the, in the bill that with regard to the, the special permits for overloads or wide loads, either excess size or wide loads, they are prohibited from traversing certain highways at certain times and primarily it's the, the rush hour morning, the rush hour evening and lunchtime. But I, I just had a, a question, knowing that we, we have limited roadway systems from point A to point B for, for the sake of commerce and transporting all these things, is there a practice right now amongst the, that you're aware of amongst the, the commercial businesses to, to keep away from the highways at certain points? I mean, where I'm going with this is we've got, you've heard from the others about safety concerns and the hazards to motorists and, and I know that, you know, as a, as a grandma, when I'm on the road, those big trucks are a little intimidating and you often wonder, well, are there times where they, where they selectively choose not to be on the highway? Are you aware of, of limitations just in the, in the normal course of, of, of conducting the, the travels amongst the businesses?
For weights?
No, just, just in general, from general transport.
As far as designated routes?
Designated routes, times of traversing? Because there's clearly a, there's limitations and considerations with the oversized and overweight already, but I was just thinking generally, if we were to have a, a happy medium of cars and, and trucks on the road, what would that happy medium be? Because you can't send them somewhere else, right?
No.
Can't send them somewhere else, so I guess the question begs, where can, can we have some, some parameters of when they can be? I mean, are they prohibited from rush hour times, like the wide loads? Or can they be?
Yes, they are.
They are already, okay. Because I, I wasn't aware. I just know that they're always out there.
I think that's found on page 23.
Yeah.
Any vehicle issued a permanent special equipment license or requiring a special permit shall be prohibited from operating on the highways during the hours of 7:00 to 9:00 AM, 12:00 to 1:00 PM and 4:00 to 6:00 PM, Mondays through Fridays.
Right, but that, but I note though that that's, that's that category of excessive. I was talking about the run-of-the-mill.
Oh.
The run-of-the-mill vehicles. Is that something that, that is even reasonable to consider in, in your estimate? I know that commerce has to happen and time is precious, but when you've got a shared usage of the roadways, you know, you would--
Yeah. I guess the only way I would answer that is that those basic limitations on width and length and height and weight are intended to put all the categories of vehicles in what that reasonable box would be. And so if you are under this height and you're within this width and you do that, then you can, you have free reign of where you can go, but we hadn't really approached it any other way, at least with this bill.
But I, I would also recommend as a policy, just, just thinking ahead, if, if there's some way that we can consider lane restrictions, perhaps time parameters for travel, because when you think about the, the road system on Guam and you've got many trucks changing lanes, it, it creates a situation that is not safe for the four-passenger car or the six-passenger vehicle. It really isn't and it's, it's, it's quite nerve-wracking. So my point is, you know, how do we, because there are, are no other options for routes, how do we make it so that it's, it's really a safer existence on the roadways?
We could look at that, Senator. The, the whole concept is these roads are public roads and, and the only time roads are, our vehicles are limited in terms of time would be the, the oversized vehicles. There, currently, again, today, there's only one, apologize, but there's only one waiver that's in play and that's for the solid waste vehicles and we're in the process of reducing them and working with them so that they do come into compliance come January.
I would advocate for restrictions on lane usage. I would advocate for restrictions on rush hour usage, that sort of thing. It just makes more sense and it gives a lot of us that, that share the roads--
Sure.
--a sense of security to some degree.
Sure.
Thank you.
Now, I just have a quick follow-up that Senator Torres, Senator Torres does bring up a very good point and I, I recall in a previous legislature, I, I think we did by statute regulate the, the heavy equip, the, the vehicles that are carrying the 40-foot containers, the 20-foot containers--
The outside, yes.
--that, that they have to be on the farthest right side. And we have also done something where if there's insufficient clearance, that the driver can use as discretionary, because the problem back then was the drivers of these rigs were being given citations because they weren't on the farthest right, the lane, but then there was no insufficient shoulder clearance. And so they weren't on the farthest right and then they were getting all these violations. I, I think also in that same statute, we also, or the legislature at the time, put in the similar provisions that they cannot traverse during rush hour. So it's not, may not be in this bill, it may not be in this area, but I believe that there's existing statutes that--
I thought that, that bill was repealed. I may be wrong, but I thought that was, that law has been repealed because of the conditions of the roadway, so we allowed the heavier vehicles to travel on the insert, the inner lanes. So I could be wrong--
Well, I have to go back, but I think, I believe the truck drivers are happy now because they can exercise their discretion if there's insuff, insufficient clearance on the, the shoulder lane and, so I know this not, this issue, but I think I want to recognize that Senator Torres does bring up that point and I, I want to go back and refresh my memory with respect to how that's being regulated now, because I, I believe we did have this done before. But, but Director, you're saying that there currently may be no regulations with how--
I'm not sure. I, I remember that there--
I think what was repealed, what was repealed was those requirements that they always have to be on the right side--
That's right.
--no matter what.
That's right.
So we went and made for those kinds of, because, you know, one law for one jurisdiction is not a cookie cutter, right? So we had to make those certain provisions in law where those truck drivers can exercise those kinds of discretions. But more to Senator Torres's point, I don't think they're allowed to traverse during heavy traffic, whether it's morning, lunch hour or evening traffic and--
That's right.
I'll go back and double check and I'll--
For the oversized vehicles, that's right.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Senator. Senator Underwood?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, big trucks also scare me. And I'm either behind them, I just slow down, or I pass them real quick, you know, just because of, you know, they're just overwhelming. But I do have a question, Director, regarding the expenditures that we, on the average, for maintaining our road. Do you have a sense about how much we actually spend in maintaining the road and what proportion of the fees that we anticipate we'll be getting from these, from this public law, right, that we will be implementing would then, is that just a little bit too--
It's a really difficult thing to pin down. My expenditures are, are based on what I get through, through the budget bill. For, from the federal highways, they've given us, we have a, a trust fund that we, we draw from, it's 40% for the territories. Our, our allocation's about $14.5 million a year. Given that, we have a, a planning process at which we're going to be in the process of issuing or updating, which is called the Guam Transportation Implementation Plan. Basically tells us what we're going to spend our money on. So given the finite amount of money, well, that's, sorry, let me back up even further. We did do an assessment, we did an assessment bit back in 2010 for, not the, not the routed roads, not the million roads that I have, Route 1, Route 10, but the secondary and tertiary roads. And that estimate for secondary and tertiary roads is about $1 billion just to, to, to fix all those roads. We're in the process of, of, we don't have enough money to do all the projects we want to do on the routed roads from the federal highway standpoint, so we're already limiting the amount of money a year. So to, to answer the question, what does it cost us to maintain all the roads? I mean, that, I have to ask, and I apologize for asking--
No, it's okay.
--a question back, to what extent are we looking at? Are we looking at the entire roadway system? Are we looking--
Or at least, you know, when we're talking about the main, I think the main strips that are used, because if we are going to be, the trucks don't go in the third, I mean, the--
Yes, they do.
Very, yes, they do. Yes, they do. So, um, yes, I was just curious, I was just curious about how much we anticipate we would be getting from this. You know, how much would it be helpful really in, in, in the maintenance and the cost for maintaining our roads?
So there are, there are two parts. One is, I'll add to what the director said. So in the territorial highway funding program that come from the feds-- So in the territorial highway funding program that come from the feds, that typically speaking, we can't spend that money on maintenance items. We have some latitude with our federal highways representative to do some things that in some places could be denied, because they said that's, that's regular maintenance and we can't use those funds for that. What we have targeted those federal funds for, understanding that even on a routed road system and our bridge system and everything else, that there's not enough money to go around, we've allocated that to taking care of the worst problems first. And so we've upgraded all the critical bridges on the, or most all the critical bridges on the routed road system, and now we're starting to look at some of those other areas. So that is with our regular ma, the other maintenance fund has to come as local money, whether it is on routed roads or actually on the secondary, tertiary, the village road system. As far as the money from this, we, we talked about that at length, and we really wanted this to just be, not necessarily to go to pay for the roads, because honestly, that's a pretty big number. And there, we would, we would never, ever be able to catch up to that number. But the funds that are collected either from the permits or from the fines, go back, and that's in the bill, go back to the test facility to really just make sure that it's at least trying to be self-sustaining.
But the, the, the goal, theoretical goal, is to, to not issue fines, so we're just in compliance with the law.
Yeah.
And so what we plan for in terms of road construction for 20 years is what, you know, we're actually building, maintaining, and expecting to, I expect to see of our roads.
So the fees are probably not going, are probably not going to be significant enough for us, but I only tried to tie that in because of...
It's a big issue.
You know, the wear and tear, that you had noted, that the trucks...
Yeah, from, from a pragmatic or practical standpoint, Senator, what I envision is that we will get a lot of fines initially, because it's a learning curve, and then, and people are going to complain, but after a while, once we, to, to, to hold the resolve that Senator Anthony Attia was mentioning, that we, we, we hold it, because this, these, the, the amount of money we spend on the highways is, is expensive. It's, it's, it's very expensive, and, and we need to preserve that.
Thank you.
Senator?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, how much, how much funds do you think we've wavered away so far?
How much funds have we...
How much revenue have we wavered away?
We don't have revenue, Senator, from, from, from the waste.
So we don't collect anything currently, right now, for permits for overload or overweight?
It, the permits are $25, it's, it's not...
So, but that's... So then, do you think the, the fee, the fees that are being proposed for a single-trip permit, oversized and overweight loads of $50 is reasonable?
I, I think that for us to, again, what we want to do is, is we want to maintain commerce, we want to maintain...
I understand we want to maintain, but do you think that's reasonable?
25 is...
No, $50.
If it doesn't, I, I think it, yes, I do.
You truly believe that $50 is reasonable?
All we're doing is, is permitting vehicles, yes.
Do you know how much an auto dealer pays to get their car to go from the port to their car lot?
No, I don't.
$50 per vehicle. We're talking about a vehicle that is either oversized or overweight, and we feel that $50 is reasonable?
It's a permit, Senator.
It's, it's a permit.
Yes.
It's a permit, too, for the auto dealers, and that's why I'm asking, is $50 reasonable? Because if not, I think, I think probably $250 is more reasonable for an overweight or over, oversized vehicle. And then on continuous trip, you know, $400 is probably reasonable.
Senator, are you going to make that amendment on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, if that's what it takes, I probably sure will make that amendment, because I believe that, you know, the impact on our roads, and we hear it every day, to this day, the senators hear it every day about the roads, the condition of the roads, the condition of the roads. And today, 20 years from now, 30 years from now, 50 years from now, the condition of the roads will always be an issue.
That's, that's true. Let me maybe try to address your point. So in looking at what those fees would be, we looked at a number of states and what typically is charged for these. And frankly, we're above where, where all the states that we've looked at are for the, these particular type of fees. And the other thing that we looked at was what was our purpose behind the fees? Was it really to generate income, revenue, or is it really just to ensure that the weight is adequately distributed on the right number of axles, in which case it's not adding additional wear and tear, and therefore it's complying with really where the law wants to go? So when we looked at that, we, we had a lot of discussion about what those numbers should be, and I think what we settled on was our best, the estimate of what, what would be reasonable, because our goal really was to just make sure that it didn't cause additional wear and tear. And if that case, then, then the permit fee really covers the administrative cost, which is more or less why we settled where, where we did.
Yes, so back to square one, $50 is reasonable?
I think so. We, we think so. And, and Senator, I, I mean, I'm, I'm fully appreciative of the fact that you're, you're, and it doesn't apply to this bill, but, but, but I think you're, in terms of maintaining the roads, and, I mean, there, there are other avenues, I think, that, that, that we can be looking at, so that, and, and, and particularly using those fees to, to make sure that it goes into brick and mortar in, in our, in our road systems.
Yeah, but if these fees and these, if these permitting fees and the penalties would help maintain this, what is it, truck enforcement...
The test, test.
The test facility, then, you know, then that would be so much better for our people, so much better for our roads. But if we're going to just, I mean, $50 is, to, to, to a big corporation, $50 is, you know, to move a, a piece of heavy equipment from 1.8 to 1.8 to 1.8 to 1.8. I mean, I, I mean, if you guys feel comfortable, if you feel comfortable, Director, with the fees and, and fines that you have in this bill moving forward, then I ask that you don't come back to this body later on and saying that the fees and the fines are not reasonable, and we're not being able to maintain the facility because we don't have the funds.
I...
And that's, that's what I'm coming down to, because the bottom line is, you know, sometimes our government, we fail to realize what it costs to maintain a facility, to maintain a piece of equipment. You know, government is not in government to make money, but government shouldn't be in government to lose money.
So, so in, in that respect, if you're saying, considering the, the test facility, to, to maintain the test facility, to keep it up to date, the permits should, should cover the cost of operations and, and maintenance, I'll have to get back to you on that. But from, from, from a permit, trying to get a cultural change, the, the $25 or the $50 is, is, is in line with that, so, but, so if...
Cultural change?
So that...
We went from a tipping fee of, we went from trash from zero to almost $30. That wasn't cultural change, that was cultural shock, but the people had to pay it anyway.
That's right.
And here we are giving trash trucks waivers to, to transport the trash that we paid the tipping fee on? That's what just blows my mind.
And I...
And you guys brought it up. I didn't bring this up, you brought it up.
I brought it up because it was, total disclosure, Senator, I'm just being as transparent as possible. It was before my time, when I came in the office, I, I'm, I saw that this is an issue...
And you should have stopped it when you saw it was an issue.
And that's what we did. So, so, and when we stopped it, they...
So are there waivers still being issued to the trash haulers?
It is, because...
So then how was it stopped?
By January 1.
Why January 1st?
Because we have a transition. It's...
Transition? Come on, Director. My, my, my issue is, and I'm, I'm just very upset, because my issue is, the people don't see in their tipping fees a discount for the trash that is being hauled, that we're not being, that they're not get, the, the trash haulers are not being charged for. That's my issue.
Was January 1 driven by the fact that that's when the operator expected to be able to bring in the smaller equipment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just don't load more trash on the bigger equipment. If the truck is, has a capacity weight of 85,000, that doesn't mean they have to load it to 85,000, does it? Does it?
No, it doesn't.
It just means that's the capacity of that vehicle.
That's right.
So why can't they load it to 79,000? Or 80,000? Why do they need to go over?
I just have a follow-up comment to that. So any, any non-conforming vehicle, again, it goes back to my first question regarding any, are there any vehicles out there that if this law passes, they would be non-conforming because they're, like you mentioned, the trash company may need to bring in smaller, smaller vehicles to...
They'll need more units to meet...
Yeah, but the current trucks that they have now, those would obviously be permitted, they just have to have less capacity, right? So why would they be bringing in smaller vehicles if they could use the current vehicles, but they just don't maximize its...
So we're not talking about the, the federal receiver, I just want to be very clear on that. We're talking about the haulers...
Whomever we're talking about.
The local, the local transportation trucking companies, Senator. So, so, so their agreement, their agreement, their agreement is...
I know, Mr. Director, I understand we're not talking about the, the federal receiver, but you know what? It was the courts that came back to us and said, the damages to the roads going down to Lazen landfill, we're the one that's being responsible for that.
That's correct.
At whose expense? At our expense? Because why? Because we allow the truck haulers to haul more than what is allowed.
Well, I just want to know if there, if there, if there's a situation where those vehicles would have to be mothballed because they, they cannot be permitted, they cannot be permitted to operate on the roadway?
No, I don't see a, a situation where they would be mothballed. I do see a situation similar to what Senator Attia is saying, that they would have to use the vehicles or the units more frequently. The, I don't know if I'm, how deep you want to get into this, but the, the, the situation that's, that's confronted is, is the vehicles or, or the company could either go into default or, you know, whatever. And, and, and so we wanted to be reasonable, and Senator, you're saying that my reasonableness is, even for a short period of time, is, is not reasonable enough?
No, the taxpayers, the taxpayers are the one that's...
Please, please let him say it. And I hear you, Senator, and, and, and I don't take that lightly. So I'll, 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 I'll consider that and maybe have continues, another discussion with you, but, but at, at this point in time, what we want to do is, is, you know, like I said, when I, when I came in the office, and, and it wasn't because they're charging more or that, that impact, what I was looking at was my responsibility, the roads and the bridges, and, and when I've talked to, to our experts, and, and they said, you know, we really need to bring it down, so that's what we did. We, we brought it down. And so the, 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 the issue here with, with your concern is that it's grave enough, we need to do it quickly, we need to do it now, and, and, and I wanted just to, to make them adhere to what we have. And, and so that's, that's, that's the route I chose, and that's, that's the, the, the decision I made, and that's what I worked out with, with the trucking companies that are hauling the trash.
Okay, and, and I think, I mean, I guess in looking into it, I, I think Senator Attia brings up a, a good point about, a good point about, instead of giving them a waiver, it's just the operator could just basically haul less trash in the trailer so to come within the weight limit. But then that, you know, and then, but then there's the other factor of, then that means he has to make more trips during the day, and is there enough hours in the day to make those number of trips to keep up with the demand? And it's, and, and there's a limitation as to the number of, I don't think, I don't think the, the trash hauler operates on Sunday. So, you know, is there, is there enough days in the week, is there enough hours in the day for him to operate safely, because they don't operate during dark hours, to haul the same amount of trash to Lazen, if, if, you know, if by simply reducing the load? So that then if by reducing the heavy trucks, what they used to run, I think it was estimated at something like about 15 runs a day, you know, does that take it up to, I don't know, how many trucks? And then, so then the question, and is there enough hours in the day, enough days in the week, to continue hauling the same amount of trucks if you just, as opposed to continuing to meet the demand with what they have now and give them time to bring in additional rolling stock, to be able to then pick up on those additional runs that need to be made? And then the existing stock will have to be run at a lower, at a lower weight. So I mean, I mean, I, I think it's, it's, I, I think it's, you know, those are the considerations that need to be taken into account. But I think, Senator Attia, you, you know, you raise, you raise very good points, and, you know, so, but, but I, I think if you really get into the weeds, those things need to be taken into consideration.
Anybody else?
And Mr. Chairman, those things will still exist even after this bill is passed and becomes law. I mean, those, you might have so, those companies that are in the same situation, where they have these fleet of vehicles that has the capacity to, to go beyond the 80,000, and so how do you, how do you also give them the same amount of courtesy to accommodate this new law if it becomes law, so we don't have any adverse impacts? That's the kind of question I, I raised, because I, I asked, do you have an idea of how many vehicles there are out there currently that may have a problem with this law, and we need to know about? They're not here, the only ones we're hearing from is the government, and certainly the government is supportive of this bill. But do you foresee any, any kind of pushback or any...
I see, I see a lot of pushback, but, but at the end of the day, it's going to just take the resolve...
Of course.
And I'm taking the lead of Senator Attia's, both Senator Attia's resolve, that we, we need to, to, to say, this is, this is important enough to preserve our roads. Yes, and, and I know, I know, once this gets implemented, because it allows the Department of Public Works to, to not only activate the WIM and the static scale, but it allows me to, to, to get portable weigh-in motion scales and, and strategically put that throughout the island so that we can make this, so we can enforce this. Again, and the whole, the whole concept is, is to get a, a cultural change so that we, we, we stay within the weight limits, so that, so that our roads and things that we plan for can last for hopefully the, the time that we've, we planned them for.
But the bottom line, those vehicles that have capacity to carry beyond the 80,000, those will still be permissible, provided their load is reduced to conform with this?
That's right.
Okay, that's, that's my question.
And, and for, for those vehicles, because those are easy, easy for us to audit, those are easy for us to get data from, because they have to weigh them before they, they bring it over to Lazen. The other, and coincidentally, we, we had another discussion with, with the cement company, and we asked them, and they were a little concerned, and, and they said that their trucks are, are designed for 80,000 pounds, so it's, it's within, and, and, you know, like you said, they're, they're made in the states, they're, they're designed within the bridge scale system, so that, so they meet the standards, they meet, they meet our criteria. So there, there may be some adverse, because people would want to add more and, and reduce their costs and, and all of this, but, but if, if our resolve is to, to keep our roads at the weights and the, the sizes that, that we've designed them for, then we'll get there.
Thank you. Although it's not part of the...
Although it's not part of the bill, I would like to go ahead and take this opportunity to also ask, there's that small bridge, the road going into Gorko?
Yes.
And a lot of petroleum trucks traverse that bridge, which, has that bridge been evaluated as to whether it's safe? Because if a fuel, if that bridge should collapse, and a fuel truck falls into that river, oh my gosh, I just can't imagine what kind of environmental damage it might cause.
Yes, yes, it was rated. We are typically now on a two-year rating cycle, and look at all the structures that are there, the Federal Highway Administration pays to have those, have that work done, and in compliance with Washington, D.C., they do them every two years. And so that particular bridge is load-posted, it's not a routed road, which means it's not technically federally eligible to be funded with the rest of our bridge program. We did rate it, and we did note that it needs to be load-posted, it has some structural issues, and it certainly has some functional issues, and lack of guardrails and other safety things that we would normally hold our federal bridges up to. But right now, with the program, at least of what we have in our current funding, it's not on the current list to be replaced. It would take us to get some of the others taken care of first. We have bridges, obviously the ones down south that we're working on, on Route 4, and then we also have another one in the queue on Cross Island Road that's there. And so trying to tackle the most important ones first, understanding there's a big concern with that one there, and really with the loading that's on it, we understand what's there, but by law, we post it for what it can take, and so that load posting is there. It's, as far as compliance with that, that's another question.
If that bridge collapsed today, does that isolate, if that bridge collapsed today, does that isolate that fuel storage area?
No, it doesn't. There's pipelines that allow it to go to other terminals.
Oh, to be able to load it at another, at another location?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, outside the agenda? No, I don't, thank you.
Okay.
I do, but I won't.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. And so the public hearing on Bill 147-33COR is deemed to have been publicly heard, and thank you very much for showing up here today. Thank you.